Good evening. At this time, we would call the January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, meeting of the Yukon City Council to order. Is Kent Mullins here this evening? If not, then Councilman Russell will give the prayer, and if you would stand for the flag salute and for the invocation, remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Thank you, Father, for this day. Just thank you so much for providing us with this time and be with us tonight here in this city meeting and help us to make the right decisions and lead this city in the right direction. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Smystrel?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
To start the meeting off, we'll have four different public hearings. So, the first is a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the two thousand and ten Community Development Block Grant in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, which was used to replace the waterline, sanitary sewer, and roadway on Cedar Avenue between Seventh and Tenth Street. Mike, do I need to pause with each one of these and ask if there's any input?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have sign-in sheets for each hearing that we're gonna pass around. So, there's a total of five times everybody's gonna sign, but if you have...
So, everyone that's here?
So, everyone's here, we're gonna pass it around. So, I just wanna let you know. Because we have to have...
Is anyone here on the first item regarding the two thousand and ten CDBG grant? This is opportunity if you are the public and you would like to come forward and discuss the matter? All right. Mitch Horton, just so I'm clear, so we need to pause, I guess, in between each one and...
Yes.
Okay.
We're starting the list around, so...
Okay, but do you have five or four different lists?
I have three different lists for what you're hearing tonight for this, and then I've got another for a couple of grants, but I address those when they come around.
Then I'm gonna trust you'll take care of it, and I'll just proceed with the meeting.
Yes.
And if I need to do something to help, otherwise, we'll just continue?
That's correct.
Is that fair? Okay. Then we'll close the hearing on the first matter, and we'll open the second public hearing to receive input regarding the CDBG money for two thousand and eleven Community Development Block Grant in the amount of sixty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars was used to replace the water, sanitary sewer, roadway, and Cedar Avenue between Seventh and Tenth Street. Do I have input from the public regarding this matter? Any input regarding this matter? We'll close the hearing at this time on this matter, and we'll open the hearing regarding input from the CDBG grant money to complete the two thousand and twelve Community Development Block Grant in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars that was used to replace the waterline on and, excuse me, roadway on Tenth Street from Main Street to Cedar Avenue. Anyone here this evening that would like to address the council regarding this matter for the public hearing? Anyone like to address the council on the matter? If not, we'll close the hearing on that matter. We have two left. We have the next public hearing is to receive input from the public regarding the two thousand and sixteen Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Development Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. They're conducting a public hearing on that matter at this time. Is anyone present that would like to address the council regarding the matter? Anyone present? Seeing no one being present, we'll close the hearing on that matter. We have one last one. That's a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the two thousand and sixteen Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Department Recreational Trails Program Grant Fund. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council about this matter? Anyone that would like to address the council about the matter? If not, then we will close the public hearings for this evening. Now, Mitch, we can just go ahead and continue at the meeting, and you've got the signature things?
That's correct, Mayor. We were sending them, and that's one of the requirements for all the following hearings that we've had that we have to have sign in.
Yes, sir. Okay. Then, at this time, the most important agenda on the item, we are going to make some presentations. The young people that were gracious enough to participate in the mayor's essay contest, we had a great time at the Dale Robinson Center, and there were some excellent essays. There were a lot of kids that participated. The stage was full this year, and it was wonderful. We have, I assume, the three, are there three people, three people this evening? So, if you guys will come forward, I'm gonna come around and...
Back here.
Okay.
They have them over here.
Come on. Okay, Sean's gonna help us. Guys and girls, thank you so much for coming this evening. First of all, let's recognize him.
This is Aiden Conaway, and she's from Independence Elementary. She had won second place. And this up front here is Zeb Rowley. He's from Miss Cropp's Lakeview Elementary. And then, in third place, right there in red, we have Tanner Skidmore from Mrs. Rush at Ranchwood Elementary. These are the three winners.
Did you guys bring your essays to read tonight? On TV, see, we're on TV. You can read. Are you sure? If you wanna give, you wanna give a speech, young man? Anything you wanna say? Well, I do wanna say that I'm really very much appreciative that you guys worked so hard with all your other classmates, and I hope, again, next year, that you'll do the same thing and share it with us and encourage other people to participate and get involved in doing this, because it was, I was amazed, because I got to read several of them, and you guys did a phenomenal job, and we wanted to come here tonight and recognize you all. So, is there a, let's get together. We'll line up right here, and we'll take a couple of pictures, and then we'll let you guys get out of here. You're welcome to stay. It'll be an exciting meeting this evening, but this is the best part of it, I promise, all right? So, let's have a couple of pictures, and we'll get you out of here. That was a great event, Jan, and everyone at the Parks and Rec. Thank you, guys. That was, I mean, it was packed that day with all the people that were, any idea how many, how many kids were there?
Uh, how many in this?
We had over a hundred and fifty-one.
Yeah. Hundred and fifty-one different kids participated from different schools around Yukon. So, Surrey, Yukon, Southwest Covenant did it this year. So, thank you all very much. We appreciate it very much. Okay, then this is the visitor section. And Mr. Kachini, one of our regulars, we're glad to have you. Please come forward and address the council, sir.
I'd like to start off by saying good evening to all of you, and I'm Rick Kachini with eleven forty Landmark Drive, Yukon. I'm going to present you a sit rep of the City of Yukon Veterans Museum, and most of you say, what is a sit rep? Situation report, okay? The veterans wish to thank the city council members and the city manager for their past and current support regarding space and its cost for the space, the insurance utilities. We have been at six oh one Oak, the Art Center as they call it, for the last two and a half years, thanks to the mayor and the city manager that held the office during that time specified. Recently, the superintendent of schools, who takes over the building mid-April, requests us to vacate the building by mid-April. He states his funds will not allow to care and pay for the City of Yukon Veterans Museum. I told him that I would pass the information on to the city. Presently, the city has in assets the museum artifacts. We, the staff, were but volunteers supporting the community to help the city. The staff and I are still on call to the city for whatever we can do to help the situation. We stand ready to serve and are looking for direction. Please keep in mind that some of the volunteers and donors have passed since the opening of the museum. Our staff would like to brainstorm with you on the solution that no veteran is disrespected or shunned since their passing in respect to those artifacts that they have donated to the City of Yukon Veterans Museum. I'll be staying at the end of the session in case there's any questions. I've got four board members with me to help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other visitors this evening that would like to address the council about a non-agenda item? Visitors on a non-agenda item?
I don't know if that, all the meals report is sent out to you.
I'm reporting for Joanne Altman's. I'm Jan Scott with Parks and Recreation. She is unable to be here tonight, but she wants to thank the City of Yukon for providing the kitchen and the support, and she's one of our employees, so I'm just thanking you on behalf of Yukon Mobile Meals.
Thank you.
You have your report in.
Yes, ma'am. Any other visitors? Then, at this time, we will adjourn as the Yukon City Council reconvenes as the YMA. The first item on the agenda is the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of January the fifth, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, ladies? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Smystrel?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
The next item is item one B, and that's consider approving resolution YMA two thousand and sixteen dash one, a resolution of the Yukon Municipal Authority adopting policies and procedures for the city water and sanitary sewer...
Connections.
Sorry. For the properties outside the city limits. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
At this time, we will adjourn as YMA reconvenes as the Yukon City Council. The first item is the Consent Docket, item number one. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of January the fifth, two thousand and sixteen, B, payment of material claims in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-four cents, C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade, and D, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for February the second, two thousand and sixteen, seven PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
The next item is two, and that's the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. City manager.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I would like to report that for the month of November, which we received in January, our sales tax received were one million, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. That is down from last month, one point two one percent. However, for the year-to-date, we are showing an increase of eleven point nine seven percent. I would also like to report on the storm debris pickup. Arbor Masters was contracted after the Thanksgiving ice storm that we had. They concluded their part last Friday. On January the thirty-first, we will close the site at Taylor Park. We will continue allowing residents to haul their debris and limbs until that time. If anyone has any questions, please call our Public Works number or City Hall. Thank you.
Questions for the manager? Questions, ladies?
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
A person called and said that the Taylor Park is not included in the city's pickup. That's what this person had been told. New Meyer Park, are we aware of that?
Uh, they are welcome to take their limbs, to haul their limbs there to Taylor Park for any city resident. That's within our city limits. Thank you.
All right, any questions? On the tax, as far as our year-to-date, are we about where we had projected? We thought we would be?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, the next reports, that should be one of our better months, is that right?
It should be. That will be the month of December, so that will be all of Christmas.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Next item is item three, and that's consider accepting the two thousand and ten CDBG number one four four two four in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, which was used to replace the sanitary and roadway on the Cedar Avenue between Seventh and Tenth Street as, by placing the maintenance bond into effect and confirm the authorization of the final payment for the contractor as recommended by the city engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is four, and that's consider accepting the two thousand and eleven Community Development Block Grant, number one four eight four three, in the amount of sixty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which was used to replace the waterline and roadway on Cedar Avenue between Seventh and Tenth Street as completed, placing the maintenance bond into effect and confirm authorization of final payment for the contractor as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Okay. Second.
Whatever.
You might tell all of these are in Ward Four, guys, so...
So, you'd like to make the motion on them?
No.
Okay.
I'll...
Do you have a motion and a second?
I do have a second.
I'm the second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll. Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Next item is five, and that's consider accepting the two thousand and ten CDB number one five two five seven in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five, which was used to replace the roadway on Tenth Street from Main Street to Cedar Avenue as completed, placing the maintenance bond into effect, and confirm authorization of final payment for the contractor as recommended by the city manager. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item six is consider approval for submission of a proposal under the two thousand and sixteen Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department Recreational Trails Program Grant for Phase Two of Trail and Lighting at Chisholm Trail, Freedom Trail, City Parks, with a funding request of one hundred and sixty thousand and a city match of forty thousand, as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
The next item is seven, consider approval for submission of a proposal under the two thousand and sixteen Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department Land and Water Conservation Fund Program Grant for a splash pad at Kimball Park with a funding request of a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty, and a city match of one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty, as recommended by the Development Services
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Russell?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Number eight is consider approval of submission of a proposal under the two thousand and sixteen ODOT Transportation Alternative Program for Trailhead and Trails segment at a sports complex with a funding request of seven hundred thousand and a city match of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, as recommended by the Department Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Number nine is consider accepting a fee in lieu of onsite detention in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars from Verizon for one-two-two-one Garth Brooks Boulevard as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Discussion?
Is that a one-time payment, or...
Yes. Just a one-time fee.
Other discussion? Call the roll, please. Smystrel?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is item ten, and that's consider approval of submission of notice of intent to the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for storm discharge in small municipal storm sewer sanitary system under the OPERS General Permit OKRO four and authorizing the acting city manager to sign the application as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Anna Wagner, and I'm the Stormwater Manager for the City of Yukon, and this is a notice of intent that we need to submit by the end of the month, January thirtieth, for letting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality know that what our intentions are for our stormwater program and for submitting for a new permit that we're gonna be, for another five-year permit period. So, that's what this is for, so...
Any questions? 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 I just have a couple. Will this involve participation by the community?
Yes. Anybody that wants to participate in looking at the permit, they can come to my office at any time. I'm gonna try to have it out on the website, too, so they can look at it, and then we will be discussing it before we actual, the stormwater plan. But what we're agreeing on tonight is just the notice of intent that's gonna be going to DEQ and then giving a summary of the last ten years of our program, so...
And then, going forward, will we be, will we be putting a new plan together?
Yes, that's the new plan. We have to have a new plan and permit, so...
And when's it due?
We have this year to get it put together.
Okay. So, and then that information, but that will add additional requirements for the community. We talked a bit in our planning session, like regarding swimming pools, and I mean, there are things that will definitely, grass clippings, fertilizer, those type of things that affect almost everybody in the community.
Yes. The last ten years, what we've been doing is trying to educate people on these things. Probably in this next permit period, there may be more enforcement, that if we find people doing things that they shouldn't be doing, we may end up having to do more enforcement on them to let them know, because so far, what we've been doing is just educating, a lot of newspaper articles, sending out inlet, or inserts in the utility building, that kind of stuff, and trying to let them know that, hey, you shouldn't be blowing your grass leaves out on the street or your grass clippings. Those, in turn, go to our storm drains, number one, it could plug them, but it's also putting nutrients into our creeks and fertilizer and stuff that's gonna cause the ecosystem in our creeks to be bad. And the drinking water, it then will be polluted because of our water goes to the North Canadian.
And that water actually be monitored, is that what you said?
Possibility that, yes, we may end up having to pull samples and monitor, like at Turtle Creek, going into the North Canadian River, we may end up having to monitor those and to determine that we don't, you know, what kind of pollutants are we putting into the creek, so...
So, more information to come, then, from...
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, consider approving a preliminary plat for Frisco Edition Number One, a strip piece of parcel of landline in part of the northeast quarter of the northwest of Section thirty, Township twelve, North Range five west, Canadian County, Oklahoma, seventeen hundred West Vandament, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll. Smystrel?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
The next item is twelve, and that's consider approving a final plat for Frisco Edition Number One, a stripped piece of, piece or parcel of landline in part of the northeast quarter, northwest quarter of Section thirty, Township twelve, North Range five west, in Canadian County, Oklahoma, seventeen hundred West Vandament, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item thirteen is consider approving the specifications and authorizing advertising for bids for grinding and removal of the ice storm tree debris pending approval by the city attorney as recommended by the Sanitary Service Director. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrel?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
New business, item fourteen. Thank you, sir. Council discussion. Councilwoman Yonda.
Well, I just wanna congratulate again the essay winners.
Councilwoman Yonda.
Well, I just wanna congratulate again the essay winners. I think it says a lot about our, the parents of our community and the teachers for the great amount of participation that we had, and we live in a great community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smysterla.
We do have a wonderful city, and the Parks Department is a really great time, and many, many children participate, and it's not every town that gives children that opportunity to do some things like they do here. I have a little great-granddaughter, you know that anyway, and she is already into the library thing, and she's nineteen months old, but, you know, she's really, I'm real proud of that, and I know there's a lot of other babies, but it's a great place to be, and I just want it to be warm. What can we do for that? Can we vote on that? Okay, thank you.
Councilman Russell.